Call a meeting to order, please. Supervisor Fisher, would you lead us in an invocation?
Let us pray. Dear Lord have me, Father, we thank you for this day and for our many blessings. We ask your blessings on our veterans and those currently serving in our military services. Help us to never forget their sacrifices. We ask for your guidance and direction in our work this evening for the citizens of Frederick County. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Vice Chairman Ewing, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
I stand face flag. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we adopt the agenda, I'd like to recognize a special guest this evening, Scott Seth Brenneman. Perhaps if he would come forward and introduce the special person he has with him this evening and tell us what merit badge he's working on, if he'd come up to the podium. You might have to pull that microphone down. Just reintroduce yourself and introduce your partner back there.
I'm Seth and that's my dad, Aaron. And I'm a Boy Scout in Troop Two. And I'm working on acquiring it for the communications merit badge.
Well, we welcome you this evening. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Now, the adoption of the agenda. Mr. Riley, any changes?
No, sir.
Pleasure, the board?
For approval, is submitted, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Supervisor De Haven to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Ewing. Any discussion? Hearing on all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no.
The agenda is adopted. Mr. Riley, the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd offer the following tabs. Tab H, Parks and Recreation Commission Report. Tab I, Technology Committee Report. And Tab J, Human Resources Committee Report.
Any questions? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Supervisor Spicer. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins. Discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no.
The consent agenda is approved. Citizen comments. Supports the meeting the board sets aside for the citizens to speak, that any things are not subject to a public hearing. Mr. Riley, did anyone sign up?
We have three citizens that have signed up. Mr. Chairman, first citizen is Sean Graber from Back Creek District.
If you'd please come forward, give your name, magisterial district again, please, and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Name is Sean Graber from the Back Creek District. Thank you for allowing me to address the board. Just like to start out by stating, I have a statement here I'd like to read to you. First, I'd like to speak tonight regarding an item of public concern in the delivery of fire rescue services to my resident in Star Tannery and specifically the Star Tannery Fire Department. Specifically, I would like to address some ongoing issues that have been plaguing the department and the delivery of fire and emergency services to the community. I am a career fire medic, have been a veteran of the fire service for 15 years, and a practicing medic for 11 years, so I have a little experience. I'm addressing this body tonight to follow up on my first conversation as a citizen on July 28th, 2011, I had with the Deputy Chief of the county's Fire and Rescue Department, Mr. Bowmaster. During this conversation, I discussed issues regarding patients, patient abandonment and malpractice possibly within the department. Gave him several opportunities to reply, and after he chose not to reply to me, I subsequently followed the chain of command, went up to the fire chief. I took eight complaints to the deputy fire chief and was treated disgracefully by him and by the county fire chief. After this, I had a conversation with the county administrator and advised him of my findings and was again treated very disgracefully. After following this, I kept quiet for several months and only defined several additional severe violations of the Virginia Department of Health and also of emergency services regulations that were violated. They included a recent convicted individual answering emergency calls. I contacted the fire rescue department again. They chose not to follow up with this individual and correct it, so I called the Commonwealth and Virginia Department of Health. Upon this conversation with the Department of Health, they informed me they would investigate it, and within 48 hours upon my phone request, the individual was removed from running calls in my district. Also, while speaking with the Virginia Department of Health, I was informed that they had over 20 complaints regarding the delivery of emergency services to my district. Upon a Freedom of Information request filed this year, I have obtained significant information showing that there's been nearly 10% no response rate and of the no response rate, and additionally with the complaints, approximately 30% of all calls fielded by the Star Tannery Fire Department have either been a no response or have had complaints filed with the Commonwealth Department of Health. I'm asking that the board investigate the Star Tannery Fire Department, and I would also like to ask Mr. Lofton, if we could speak. I have significant pages of information that I'd like to pass along to you regarding the department, which I think is in disarray and is in dire need to the citizens to have improvement, to help the citizens of Star Tannery, both in Frederick and Shandau County. Thank you for your time.
Next, Mr. Riley.
Jay Martz.
Good evening, Chairman Schickel, members of the board. I'm Jay Martz from the Gainesboro District. Once again, we are fortunate to have good economic news in the Commonwealth. I don't know if you saw, revenue collections last month were up 15.7% over the same period last year. So far this year, total revenue collections were up 4.8% through October, putting them well ahead of our annual forecast of 2.9% growth. However, I think we are all aware, well aware, of the so-called fiscal cliff approaching us, and I believe it was prudent that our governor, Governor McDonnell, has directed all state agencies to make plans for 4% in spending cuts. We here in the county have experienced a surplus as well, 13.2 million. Your decision was to spend it, if I read the minutes correctly, 2.2 million to school board salary supplements, 3.9 million for general fund supplemental, 4.3 million to repay the general fund. I think that leaves about 3.8 million remaining out there, and I guess that there will be a move to spend this as well. Also, I would remind you that we had 1.1 million surplus in the schools budget. With all these millions of dollars being collected and spent, I think it is time for the elected board to do something for the taxpayer. I've had the opportunity to speak with many residents about this subject in the last couple of months, several of which have spoke to the board and sent individual correspondence. And as a group, we have gathered numerous signatures on petitions that we have provided to you all. Now, this board moved very quickly to convene a special budget meeting and have a public hearing to raise our taxes, and the county government was able to amend our tax assessment forms very quickly. I hope you can be as enthusiastic and as agile to return or reduce our property tax rate back to 5.45 where it was. What must the taxpayers do to get an action before the board to vote on this important matter? I think it deserves a vote. After all that increase, all that surplus, there was more than enough to cover the increase in property taxes that was supposed to raise the $3 million for the salary increase. So I think that the taxpayers deserve a vote on reducing the tax rate back to where it was before the surplus. So I thank you, and I await your reply.
Next, Mr. Riley.
Joy Kirk, Back Creek District.
Good evening. My name is Joy Kirk, and I'm the president of the Frederick County Education Association and a resident of the Back Creek District. On behalf of my membership, I would like to thank Mr. Riley and the Board of Supervisors for allocating the funds which allowed the school board to provide a one-time bonus for employees. We will receive that bonus later this month, and I'm sure the local economy will benefit from those monies. I would also like to thank the Board of Supervisors for their work with the Frederick County Public School School Board and Dr. Sovine and his team to allow for optimal funding to meet the needs of Frederick County public schools' children in the future. In changing times, we must have the financial means to meet ever-changing expectations. Our students will compete with students across the state, the nation, and around the globe. We need to be able to provide them the opportunities and services so they come out on top. Thank you for your time.
Board of Supervisors, comments? Are there any? Right next, we'll move on to the minutes of the regular meeting, September 26th, 2012.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
By Supervisor Fisher to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Ewing. Discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The minutes of the regular meeting, September 26th, 2012, were approved. Next is the work session with the Planning Staff Commission, October 1st, 2012.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Supervisor Ewing to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins. Discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no.
The minutes of the work session with the planning department, October 1st, 2012, were approved. Next is the regular meeting, October 10th.
Move for approval, is submitted, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Supervisor De Haven to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Any discussion? Hearing on all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no.
The minutes of the regular meeting, October 10th, 2012, were approved. Next, we have some special things to do. Would Gwen Monroe please come forward? And if her husband'd like to come along, he can. Is that okay? At a previous meeting, the board passed this resolution, and I'd like to read it. This is the earliest we could get her here in order to present it personally to her. Whereas Gwen T. Monroe faithfully served as the Director of Social Services for the county of Frederick for the past 34 years, from January 1st, 1978, until July 31st, 2012. And whereas Mrs. Monroe was an advocate in Virginia for the state's Children's Transformation Initiative and became an agent of change under the Virginia Department of Social Services system of identifying grassroots leaders under the Agents of Change program, which was designed to improve the way at-risk children or families achieve success. And whereas Mrs. Monroe initiated and implemented child and family teams as a matter of practice for all children at critical decision points, such as preventing removal from and return to the home. And whereas during the term as Chair of the Community Policy Management Team, Mrs. Monroe changed the way families were engaged as partners to prevent placement of children outside of the home. And whereas Mrs. Monroe's work has been highlighted on many occasions as a model leadership and community practice. Now therefore be it resolved that Frederick County Board of Supervisors extends its sincere thanks to Gwen T. Monroe and wishes her all of the best in her future endeavors. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread across the minutes of the Frederick County Board of Supervisors, for all citizens to reflect upon the accomplishments of this public servant adopted the 8th day of August, 2012. Thank you so much.
I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to work in Frederick County. It was a great, great place, a good agency to work for in social services, and the support of the Board of Supervisors has been outstanding. I just want to say thank you to everyone and to John Riley. Thank you.
Next, if we could have Jean Anderson come forward. We would like to specially recognize her this evening. Chief Deputy and the Commissioner of Revenue's Office was selected Deputy Commissioner of the Year for 2012 by the Commissioner of the Revenues Association of Virginia at its annual meeting in Bristol, Virginia on Tuesday, September 25th, 2012. This award was given in recognition of service, attendance, and supervisory recommendation. It's quite an honor, as there are about 700 registered Deputy Commissioners in Virginia. Deputy Commissioner Anderson was selected based upon her, one, exemplary work ethic as shown by her willingness to take on the in-house reassessment of real estate, including assisting with the implementation of online information and appeals, and managing the regular real estate division staff and duties along with personal property and other deputy assignments. Two, willingness to work with other localities to assist in the understanding, implementing the camera real estate appraisal system and the Brighton Associates billing and professional property assessment systems. And three, mentoring through educational seminars with the West Central Commissioner of the Revenue Association for the educational benefits of its members. The Board of Supervisors would like to take this opportunity to congratulate Deputy Commissioner Jane Anderson on her selection as Deputy Commissioner of the Year for 2012. On behalf of the board, congratulations and well done. And next, but not least, the Employee of the Month Award Program. Only, it's not just one employee this month. The Employee of the Month Award Program recognizes the county's employees as an important and valuable resource. On behalf of the Board of Supervisors, it is my pleasure to present the Frederick County Sheriff's Office Accreditation Team for the consideration as Employees of the Month for September 2012. The accreditation team's countless hours of labor and preparation, along with tons of paperwork, paved the way for the Frederick County Sheriff's Office being awarded as accredited agency from the Virginia Law Enforcement Professional Standards Commission. And what I'd like to do is read the names and have you come forward as I read them, without the team effort from Captain Alec Beaman. Deputies Tanya Kato, please stay up here. Christopher Hockman. Kevin Popp. David Simpson. And Marlese Jenkins. Without these officers, this accreditation would not have been possible. An accredited agency reaps cost savings in operations and enhances risk management procedures along with reduced liability costs and insurance fees. This team is to be commended for their diligence, self-sacrifice, and professional work ethic for this achievement. I will now entertain a motion to approve the Frederick County Sheriff's Office Accreditation Team as Employees of the Month for November 2012.
Mr. Chairman.
A motion by Supervisor Lofton, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Spicer. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Frederick County Sheriff's Office Accreditation Team is hereby recognized as the Frederick County Employees of the Month for November 2012. The Board of Supervisors extends its gratitude to this team for their outstanding performance and dedicated service and wishes them continued success in future endeavors. Thank you all. All right, next, we'll move on to the committee appointments. Frederick County, what happened here? Frederick County Business Climate Assessment Committee, Citizen Committee. Mr. Riley, would you like to make any comments other than what you wrote here?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We did send out 100 invitations under your signature. We had a reply of 36 individuals, and per the board's initiative, we would like to go ahead and start the process of organizing the first meeting.
Did we have a deadline on the response?
We did.
It's passed?
It has.
So, and it's at 36?
Yes, sir.
Perhaps you could distribute a list to us?
We will.
Okay. And then what do you plan to do next?
We will try and set some dates to have our first organizational meeting, and we hope the board can attend.
Any questions, Mr. Riley? Supervisor Lofton?
Mr. Riley, are these 36, are they going to be sufficient to staff the different subcommittees that we want, or could you take more if we can find more for you?
That's a good mix. We have the staff internally to support their work, so...
We're good with what we got right now?
We're fine. We're ready to go, and we've had some interesting conversations with individuals that because of their schedules could not do it at this particular time, but expressed their encouragement to the committee to do its work.
Other questions? All right, hearing done, we'll move on to the vacancies in other committees. Community Policy and Management Team, I believe we have a recommendation?
Yes, sir, Ms. Greta Cherry.
Okay, we have a recommendation endorsement for Greta Cherry. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for appointment, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion to appoint, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher, any discussion? Hearing on all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ms. Greta Cherry is appointed to the Community Policy and Management Team, CPMT. Extension Leadership Counsel Redbud, are we ready?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Board of Equalization, Gainesboro?
Not yet, Mr. Chairman.
Board of Zoning Appeals, Apekin?
Mr. Chairman, I have spoken with Mr. Shirley. He's willing to serve another term, so I'd like to make a motion that we forward his name to the Judge Frederick County Circuit Court for final appointment.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Any discussion? Hearing on all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Reginald K. Shirley III will be recommended to the Judge of the Frederick County Circuit Court for appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Chapter 10 Board, County Representative. We have three seats. Is just the only one that's vacant, Mr. Riley?
Yes, sir.
And we do not have an applicant?
Not yet.
Mr. Chairman, if I can ask a question about that one. That could be anybody from the county.
Yes, sir.
I might have someone.
Great. Next, Frederick Winchester Service Authority. Mr. Fisher is up for possible reappointment. My assumption is he would be willing to serve again.
Yes.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor De Haven, any discussion? Hearing on all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Then Jean Fisher is reappointed to the Frederick Winchester Service Authority. Winchester Frederick County Economic Development Commission, Board of Supervisors representative, Mr. Lofton is currently serving. I assume he would be willing to do so again.
Yes, sir, very enthusiastically.
All right, what is the pleasure of the board?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor De Haven to appoint, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher, any discussion? Hearing on all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Congratulations, Mr. Lofton.
Thank you.
Historic Resources Advisory Board, we had a resignation. I do not believe we have a replacement yet. Correct, Mr. Riley?
Correct.
Okay. Any of you who would like to help with that endeavor, please let me know, or Mr. Riley. Next is Parker Recreation Commission, we, Back Creek.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Longerbeam has worked very well in our Parks and Recreation Commission. I know he puts a lot of effort into it, and I'm sure he wants to continue, so I would recommend that Gary E. Longerbeam be reappointed to the Parks and Recreation Commission for the Back Creek District.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Ewing. Any discussion? Hearing on all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Gary E. Longerbeam is reappointed to the Parks and Recreation Commission. And finally, the Planning Commission, Gainesboro.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Triplet has expressed a desire to serve another term on the Planning Commission on behalf of the Gainesboro District, so I would make a motion that we approve his position in that position on the commission.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton, any discussion? Hearing on all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Charles E. Triplet is reappointed to the Planning Commission. All right, next is a resolution of the Board of Supervisors of Frederick County concurring with a financing to be undertaken by the Industrial Development Authority of Clark County, Virginia for the benefit of Lord Fairfax Community College Educational Foundation. Mr. Riley, are you handling?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution asking for the board's concurrence to approve the application and financing for Lord Fairfax Community College through the Clark County Industrial Development Authority in the amount of $9 million to construct a multipurpose student union building of approximately 31,800 square feet, consisting of two stories and located on approximately 17.8 acres north of and adjacent to Lord Fairfax Community College main campus in Frederick County. As the board may be aware, the purpose of the concurring resolution is, is that the Frederick County Industrial Development Authority did not have the requisite eligibility under bank-qualified funds to approve this financing, so they went to Clark County that did have that level of authorization, and that is the reason for the concurring resolution. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
If it wasn't abundantly clear from that, we have to approve it because it's physically located in Frederick County.
Yes, sir.
Questions the board may have? It's a pleasure, the board.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the resolution.
All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Lofton to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Ewing, any discussion? Hearing on all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Resolution is approved. Next is a request from the Commissioner of Revenue for a refund, Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The county attorney is in receipt of the commissioner's request dated October 16th, 2012, to authorize the treasurer to refund Dewberry &amp; Davis LLC, also known as Dewberry, the amount of $76,485.98 for correction of business license reporting by the company for a total of three years, 2010, 2011, and 2012. This exoneration is based on information from the taxpayer and covers revenue that was already reported to the county under another company name. It's respectfully requested, if the board sees fit, to authorize the refund.
Questions, Mr. Riley?
Mr. Chairman, I do.
Supervisor Ewing?
Mr. Riley, we're refunding Dewberry, but it's paid by another company, which is offsetting this refund.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I thought that, but I just want to be clear.
Other questions? Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we refund the $76,485.98 to the Dewberry Company.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor De Haven, discussion? Hearing on Supervisor Spicer?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes. Next is a request from the Finance Director for supplemental appropriation for the Highway Safety Grant. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The sheriff requests a general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $35,865. This amount represents a Division of Motor Vehicles grant for selective enforcement with reference to driving under the influence. No additional local dollars are required.
Questions, Mr. Riley? Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion we approve the supplemental appropriation.
We have a motion by Supervisor Ewing, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins, discussion? Hearing on all is in favor? No, let me do this Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Spicer? Chairman votes aye and the motion passes. Next is a resolution declaring local emergency on October 29, 2012. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is necessary for the board to ratify the action of the county administrator in declaring a local emergency on October 29, 2012 in anticipation of Hurricane Sandy. It was necessary to declare the state of emergency in order to mobilize assets and be in a preparatory state with reference to the impending storm. It would be respectfully requested that the board authorize the declaration of local emergency declared by the county administrator.
Questions of Mr. Riley? Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the declaration.
A motion by Supervisor Spicer, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I had one question when I read this. I'm sorry. I understand why we have to do this. I guess the question I have, and maybe it's not relevant, but all the things that were approving, all the things that were done during this process, correct?
That's correct.
But we don't know, other than clearing the emergency, we don't know what other things happened.
If we had had a significant damage with reference to this storm, there would have been supplementary information that would have come with this resolution indicating what exactly happened. As all of us know, Commonwealth of Virginia and particularly this area was spared most of that damage other than power outages. So you are correct in your concern. The state emergency laws read, basically, due to the fact that it would be very difficult to get the board together to declare an emergency, we do it on their behalf. And then after the fact, they ratify the declaration. Okay?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Other questions? All right, hearing all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. Resolution declaring local emergency on October 29, 2012 is approved. Next, we'll have the Public Safety Committee report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. On Tuesday, October 9, the Public Safety Committee met at the Public Safety Building to discuss one item that needs the board's action. And that is the Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan was reviewed and discussed. And the plan, which must be updated and adopted every five years, was brought to the committee, given the updating and the reviewing, so that it is in compliance with the Federal Emergency Management Agency in the case of death, disasters, and hazards. The Public Safety Committee did review it with explanations from Deputy Chief Boemester and decided unanimously we recommend the plan be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors for approval, and I would so move.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Jane Fisher, discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if...
I'm sorry, this is a...
That's okay. I just say, hopefully there are no questions because there's no one here I think could answer those questions. Well, that's gonna be rough.
All right, let's back up a minute before our motion and second and put those on hold. Were there any questions? I'm sure you all have read it thoroughly and stayed awake.
Yeah.
It was a lengthy document.
Yes.
Understand every word.
And I'm certainly glad that the iPad allows you to enlarge the screen. All right, and we have a motion, a second, and any discussion on the motion? All right. Hearing all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. The Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan has been approved. Do we know how many other jurisdictions have done what yet?
To my knowledge... No, I wish I could recall what was said, but I do not know.
Perhaps we could be just notified when everybody has.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I don't think we need a tally along the way, but it would be nice to know if the regional plan that we adopted was finally passed by everybody.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the report of the Public Safety Committee.
Thanks, sir. Next is the Code and Ordinance Committee.
Mr. Chairman, the Code and Ordinance Committee met on Friday, October 26, and we discussed two issues that require the board's action. The first was that the Code and Ordinance Committee reviewed or requested to amend the Frederick County Code by adopting a new chapter 103 regarding junk dealers and revised chapters 104 and 130. In essence, the Code of Virginia has been rewritten to redefine pawnbrokers, junk dealers, and the like. And the Code and Ordinance Committee came to the conclusion that these chapters that we have do not comport with the Code of Virginia. And therefore, we moved as a committee unanimously to strike those provisions from the Frederick County Code.
Questions of Supervisor Collins? My assumption is here that we would send this recommendation to public hearing or it would die here?
Yes, it would need to go to public hearing to change it.
So we have a recommendation, I think, from the committee to do what we need to do, and that would be to go to public hearing. Are there any questions on the matter? All right, does the board wish to send it to public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we forward this to a public hearing.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Ewing, discussion? Hearing all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Next.
The second issue, Mr. Chairman, was the Code and Ordinance Committee reviewed to propose amendment to various articles of the Frederick County Code, Chapter 155, which is taxation. The committee discussed eliminating interest on the machinery and tools tax for late payments, as the county is required to pay the same amount of interest upon any refund to a taxpayer. Upon motion, it was unanimously approved to strike that provision. Just to flush it out a little bit more, if we refund a person because we improperly taxed their tools, if we charge interest, we would have to refund them their money plus whatever interest we would have collected. It's, even though we may not have collected any interest from them, we would then have to pay them what interest would have been garnered on that money had it been earning interest. That I think I spelled that out correctly.
That component, your committee postponed decision on?
No, sir, they postponed.
I think it's the next part you're actually bringing us.
Correct, I'm sorry. I misreading. I had to blow mine up, and so I missed the paragraph. Sorry. Yes, sir, I'm sorry. Then the committee discussed the remainder of the proposed amendments to Chapter 155 to include the removal of references to Chapter 130, which has been proposed for repeal in its entirety. That motion was passed unanimously. And I would ask that we present that for public hearing along with the removal of Chapter 130 from the code.
It's in the form of a motion. First, questions? Supervisor Lofton?
One section of this does not impact the other section of what we're going to do here tonight? You've postponed one action?
Correct.
To gather more information, that doesn't have a bearing on what other action we may take on this?
Correct.
Right?
That's right. They're two separate, they're two separate issues.
Okay.
Is there merit to holding this piece up till the other piece gets concluded?
I don't think they, they don't combine well with each other. The one issue, the machinery and tax, tools tax, we didn't really address at all, other than the interest portion of it. The Chapter 130 regarding, the Virginia code now is in place. And so a lot of our sections, we're referring back to Chapter 130 in the taxation code, which...
That's all it is, is an elimination of the referral?
Yes, sir.
Wasn't sure that was clear to me. Was it clear to everyone else? Okay, well, you all were ahead of me.
I was on the committee.
Mr. Williams, you look like you want to speak.
Mr. Chairman, for clarity's sake, the changes to 155, they do include eliminating the references to 130 and 104. There are a number of other changes there that largely came through upon recommendation from the Commissioner of the Revenue to make the tax code work a little more efficiently and do what it needs to do. So there are some other changes there. The commissioner's with us tonight, too, and obviously can speak to that if need be.
That was abundantly clear to Code and Ordinance?
Yes, sir. We had a, we had a very lengthy conversation. It was, because it's intermixing and it is fairly complic... It's confusing because of the overlapping and removing of some language.
Well, certainly if we're at comfort with it, we should send it to public hearing. If we, this further, I don't know, understanding of what's going on gives us reason for pause, I doubt that it's a major issue to pause and have more contemplation time.
Mr. Chairman, to go back to your point, Supervisor Collins, if we in fact press forward with the second paragraph to public hearing, when you get the information for the first paragraph, will that need to go to public hearing after that?
Yes.
So we'd have two public hearings on basically the same chapter, but just different items within that chapter?
Correct.
That's why I wondered if it wasn't...
Right, that's...
...late to deal with at once. Three public hearings into two.
Does the... I guess, to stall the public hearing on the second paragraph, does that cause any concern that maybe we couldn't wait and do them both at the same time? Is there any action needs to be taken now that has a bearing on the reference to 130 that would impede or make the Commissioner of Revenue's life unbearable until they both could go?
Sounds like we could use the advice of counsel of the Commissioner of Revenue.
It may be counsel will want to weigh in on this. The elimination of some of the chapters, they had phrases in there that no longer are the same as what the state code, as it's been rewritten over years, calls for. So we were in the problem of, do we follow the county code or do we follow the state code? And of course, state code takes precedence. So we would like it cleaned up so that if a taxpayer reads online a paragraph of the code and thinks that's what they have to do, they can be sure that that's what they have to do, whereas now they can't. So that's the cleaning up part of it, okay? Is to get the references to the chapters that don't match what the state now requires. Did I express that, Mr. Williams, to your satisfaction legally?
To my satisfaction, I don't know if you intended to address more of the ordinance or not. There were some other sections that I know that your office had worked on addressing issues other than 104 and 130.
There have been, yes. Pretty much what the changes are here, though, I think that's, it's pretty much to get that cleaned up. There are some things that we could require that people prove that they have done. Very intricate things within certain sections of our code. And the ordinance just doesn't line up. It calls for one thing to be done in one place and something else somewhere else. After many attempts at rewrite, the easiest thing to do was to eliminate the chapters in the Frederick County Code that were in noncompliance. Because we can always refer to the state codes, since state code takes precedence.
Okay, I think Chapter 130, we just sent to public hearing. The 155 changes and the...
Now, the one...
We're wondering if a small delay so that we can deal with Chapter 155 just once instead of twice, even though the items are unrelated, is doable.
Well, it says here the above motion was unanimously approved to do away with that interest, but I thought we were getting a figure from the treasurer on what that amount was. Mr. Williams, do I remember it incorrectly?
The text in the committee report says that the motion that was unanimously approved was a motion to postpone it.
Okay.
Pending receipt of that information.
All right.
So I think we are bound to be in agreement with that.
That's what I had thought.
It has not gotten to us technically at a committee yet. So then the issue before us were the modifications to Chapter 155. And the query is, can we not hold those until we get the recommendation on the interest? And does that cause a problem?
We have some people applying under sections of code that that relates to, and they have been confused by the two different types of code, the local code versus the state code. Anything that would alleviate their distress or their inability to tell what they have to do would help. It's, you know, of course, the board's decision whether you do it two different times or all at once.
Mr. Chairman, are there a large number of businesses or people?
No. It's not a large number.
Supervisor Collins?
This is kind of an unusual type thing people are doing, and we're getting more. We used to have none at all. And now we've had several come in. And there are a lot of regulations involved with those kind of businesses.
Supervisor Collins, is there a timeframe for you to get the information requested on the refunds?
We have, I think the request has been sent out. I think it's just a matter of gathering up that information. I have not heard any updates on where we are on that, but we anticipated we'd have that within a month or two. I think the treasurer's office had to do some digging. And I don't think it was a matter of just control, delete, and print off the right page. I think they actually have to pull some numbers out. The, I don't think that a postponement on our amendment to 155, because 155 is still going to refer back to Chapter 130, even if we remove Chapter 130, and 155 still refers back to 130, the state code would still apply. So I'm not, I'm not sure there's any harm in postponing that until we have all 155 in front of us and just do it all in one fell swoop.
Thank you.
I think the commissioner's correct. It's more of a cleaning up than changing substantive law. It's just a matter of, the state law has changed much faster than the county ordinance has.
So for one more time, for clarity, the interest issue is not before you. It's still in committee. The changes to 155, other than that were included, are before you with the recommendation to send to public hearing, but you could certainly postpone if you so sought to. And I don't remember whether you made a motion or not. I believe I did. I have a discussion question.
You did. That's fine. I did not make a motion.
Supervisor Collins would allow the board to go whichever direction at once here, rather than present the motion from committee?
Mr. Chairman, my feelings are that if, in fact, not sending this part of it to public hearing would not cause any distress to the commissioner's office and allow time for the Code and Ordinance Committee to finish up the other section, my preference would be to have it all done at one time.
Mr. Chairman, since we can't consider the main issue that concerns me of the tax refund, I have no problem postponing it anyway. That issue concerns me. That issue concerns me.
Supervisor Collins, with that pearls of wisdom, what's your motion?
Well, Mr. Chairman, with that, I would say that's-- we can base upon the-- I don't think the committee-- the committee could take that back in our advisement. And then, once we revise the remainder of 155, when we get the more information, we can present the entire revised 155 to the board and set it all for a single public hearing. I think if we want to remove Chapter 130, which we've already sent to public hearing, like I said, I don't believe that that's going to have any substantive effect in the short term.
Your motion is to refer it back to committee for a complete review of 155. Is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
All right, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Supervisor Spicer. Discussion. Hearing, none of those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No. It goes to committee. Next, Transportation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Transportation Committee met on October the 22nd. The first item for consideration was the resolution where the board earlier this fall directed us to look at a study and evaluation of the Route 522 South, issues connected with its relocation or potential relocation route, et cetera. Upon investigation and consultation with VDOT, we were fortunate, I think it's all really good news, that they currently have an interchange modification study for Exit 313 that would effectively cover all the issues that we wanted to have a close look at connected with 522, and it's an integral part of that big picture. And VDOT feels that they can consolidate those issues into their study as part of the interchange modification study. So the committee unanimously adopted a motion that we would let VDOT include this issue as part of their modification study and await their resolutions at the end of the study. Now, it is a complex study and is likely to take some time. So I guess if there is an issue here of concern, it would be time. We can't be sure how long it's going to take, but it seems like very good news that they're willing to take this on as part of an ongoing study that has been funded, where we didn't have a funding source for our work either. That was the unanimous resolution of the committee, and if there are no questions, I would--
Now, not to be difficult on this one, I had a little bit of trouble struggling to figure out what the motion is about.
I understand, and I've had that discussion--
Are we-- would we be rescinding our resolution regarding the 522 South study?
We've accepted it at the committee and begun our work. We were just able to find this opportunity, which is, I think, a wonderful opportunity for us to get a really big picture, very in-depth study of how 522 integrates into the bigger picture of 313 and 522 and 50 and--
Well, what is, in some way, precisely said, what is staff recommendation?
That we take VDOT's offer to incorporate these issues into their study and pursue it for us.
Okay.
I guess, and again, I think the only issue might be how quickly was the board looking for a response? But the opportunity to have them incorporated into this big-picture study, I think, is a wonderful opportunity for us as a community.
So without me putting words in the committee chairman's-- the staff recommendation was to have this work included in VDOT's study and request that it be done so?
Yes, sir.
Are there questions about that? Supervisor Lofton?
What would the alternative be if we had not asked VDOT to roll this into the study they already had? Would there be-- what mechanism will we use to do it ourselves? Or will we ask VDOT to do it as a separate study or contract it down?
One of the above or a combination of those things. As we inquired at VDOT for what opportunities they may have to offer is when this opportunity surfaced itself. So VDOT would have to have had a funding source and an opportunity either through an on-call contractor or an RFP or in-house to have helped us with this study. I mean, this is a pretty involved study.
Now, I'm assuming that what this is really talking about is the realignment of 522 from--
From its existing location.
To go out past the core instead of--
Further east has been the long thought process.
I know that this came as a response from the citizenry, Supervisor Fisher. So it was a part of that presentation. Wonder what it means to them. We have a potential here for a-- well, I would assume the alternative to VDOT digesting it as part of another study would be for the developer to pay to have it done now on his timetable if it was faster. I would assume that, because I don't know why we would do that. It was a request of a land purchaser. Generally speaking--
That's true.
You know, they got to put that bill themselves. So I would assume that's the way it would have went. I don't know if you recognized it for what it was or not.
Yeah, that the cost would be, if we were to go forward, would be by the--
As far as this was that subject.
It was in with it.
So I'm asking, basically requesting that you speak to the matter as the presenter of the original resolution asking that the relocation be considered, which came as a request from a landowner.
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, you brought a resolution to us based on a request from a landowner that a relocation of the relocation be considered. And somehow or other, it's gotten before us in transportation that VDOT has offered to include that as a part of a bigger study that's going to take a while to complete. So it had no longer would have a life of its own. It would be a piece of something else. And so I am wondering if you've had the opportunity to correspond with the original request to the landowner and say, hey, does this cause you grief? My assumption is that if it had of, the only way to do something different is that landowner would have paid for the study.
I think under the previous-- yes, the original request, but no, I have not communicated that with the person requesting the previous amendment to be looked at.
Supervisor Lofton?
I guess one of the things that-- and I understand the dialogue going here, but I guess one of the things that would concern me is if a private enterprise undertook this study, how would that mesh with VDOT's study? And would VDOT then have to--
VDOT, Chuck can speak to it. VDOT would probably still steer the boat, just become its own little subset.
Because I'd hate to see it--
They wouldn't want to pay for any incurred additional costs because of that.
And that's coordinating the two studies to make sure one didn't get ahead of the other and impact one. So they'd have to go back and maybe redo some of their information or look at some of their recommendations based upon a faster study being done.
I think VDOT would draw their own conclusions regardless. 522, so it's an integral part of what happens at 313, and will have to, in some form, continue to happen. I think it's inevitable. My personal view is, as far as this question is concerned, that it's an involved study and it's likely to take time regardless. And this seemed like a--
My only comment to that was, the reason we're here, not that VDOT wouldn't have gotten around to it maybe anyway, was because we were addressing a landowner's request.
I understand.
That'd be the second part of that, is if VDOT, which I know is going to do a broader study, maybe a more integral study, does that delay impact the landowner to the point where something that might have happened doesn't happen?
The only way I could respond to that is that the landowner certainly has the rights that he had with the property when he purchased it today. On that, I mean, it's-- we haven't been able to answer his question yet. It's going to take some time and some study.
The late Chuck Maddox and I led the path on this one many years ago to have it in this location versus the one that the landowner would like to have considered. And Mr. Maddox is no longer with us, and I have looked and searched, and I cannot determine why we felt so strongly about it then because it makes no sense to me now. And I'm not going to look anymore because I can't find it. The request seems reasonable. I don't know why. I can't remember. So this was originally the VDOT position, the request that the landowner is making.
Mr. Chairman, would it be reasonable to-- if Supervisor Fisher wanted to make contact with the landowner to see if the landowner would rather it be done through his engineering or planning contacts as opposed to VDOT?
De Haven and County Administrator can help me out, but I think that Transportation was trying to move this issue up to us and use this motion as a vehicle to do that. I don't know that we have a required performance here that we have to do anything except realize where it is. VDOT has made an offer. My best guess, if we didn't accept it, they'd do it anyway. But I don't know.
They'll have to look at the issues. How--
I suspect we have plenty of time to do whatever we want to do.
I don't think there's an issue that we need to act on it tonight. The committee felt like it was a great opportunity and recommended that. We're happy to hold until--
Mr. Lofton said, in the absence of VDOT's offer, what will we do in lieu of? I don't know. It would have been, I'm pretty sure, at the landowner's tab, whatever it would have been.
But nothing at this point precludes a landowner from moving forward, even if the board chose to go with the Transportation Committee's recommendation of having VDOT fold this into their study?
I don't know. I think that's an accurate statement. Just my opinion, though.
It would seem to me if VDOT's going to do-- the recommendation from the committee was with the VDOT study. Because if VDOT makes some major significant change, then it would be a waste of time for the person requesting that little segment out there to be looked at because that could be-- you know, totally change the impacts on that if they make some major change at the 522, 50, 81 intersections there. And I've kind of heard some opinions that that may change. I think the committee was going at the VDOT study, you know, to just go along with that recommendation.
Questions? The committee was very comfortable, I think, in making its recommendation that we endorse VDOT's and staff's recommendation that this be folded into the VDOT study on the-- so we can act on that if you want to.
Well, if Supervisor Fisher is comfortable with that, that would be my motion. But if he would like an opportunity to do some other work, I don't have issue with that or concern. I don't think the committee would either.
My opinion would be if the board goes along with the committee's recommendation on this, I would make a friendly advisement to the person making the request. They ought to wait and see what VDOT comes up with because if they want to do a study, fine, but you might be wasting your money if there's a major change. It'd be irrelevant. It'd be based on outdated information.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I would move that the board authorize Transportation Committee to report back to VDOT that we appreciate and accept their offer to fold this into their study, the modification for Exit 313.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Supervisor Spicer. Discussion. Hearing, none of those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry that was so hard.
It's okay. They're complex issues. The only other item is the revenue sharing application, which appears as Item 3 under our public hearings later in this meeting. That concludes my report. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, then, next, we'll move into our public hearings. The first is the Comprehensive Policy Plan Amendment, CPBA Number 1-12, Lord Fairfax Community-- College Middletown Sewer and Water Service Area. Go ahead, Mr. Reddy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Board of Supervisors, we've discussed this item previously. Of course, the Lord Fairfax Community College is looking to expand its facilities, both on its current property but also on the property owned by the Lord Fairfax Community College Foundation. Also in the vicinity, of course, is the Middletown Elementary School and by Frederick County Public Schools. So the approach that was taken with this was to establish the Middletown, Lord Fairfax Sewer and Water Service Area as an amendment to the county's comprehensive plan. And the reason behind establishing this is then to enable the provision of public water and sewer in this area north of the town of Middletown, of course, in Frederick County. And that would allow both the current and future institutional land uses, including the community college and the elementary school. So as part of your agenda package and what has been advertised for public hearing is, of course, the text amendment to the comprehensive plan. In addition to the map that is also on the screen to your left, which identifies the property around which the Middletown, Lord Fairfax Sewer and Water Service Area has been established, again, with the institutional land use designation. It's approximately 138 acres in size. It covers five parcels. All have been identified in your agenda. And to point out, of course, that the Sewer and Water Service Area is used by-- the county did determine where public water and sewer may be provided through the comp plan, as in this case. This endorses the Board of Supervisors authorization of water and sewer in this location. Of course, the Frederick County Sanitation Authority is the body that is responsible for managing the provision of water and sewer in this, in the county. In this particular case, the Lord Fairfax Community College currently obtains their water from the city of Winchester, and their wastewater goes to the town of Middletown. So as we know through this, if approved, if this comp plan amendment is approved, the Board of Supervisors for this particular area is approving that same scenario to continue. The comp plan committee recommended approval, as did the Planning Commission at their November 7th meeting. So we're, of course, seeking approval from the Board of Supervisors to amend the comprehensive plan to include the Middletown, Lord Fairfax Sewer and Water Service Area, both the text and the map. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have and to recognize Mr. Chris Boyce is here this evening representing the community college.
Questions of staff? Did the applicant wish to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Chris Boyce, the Vice President of Finance for Lord Fairfax Community College, also a Foundation Board member with our foundation. I think this is about the fifth meeting we've had on this, so I'm not going to go all the-- over all the details. This will allow us to build our Student Union Building, which you voted on earlier to-- which we'll be financing through the Clark County IDA. This is a much-needed facility for us, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, is the public hearing to consider a Comprehensive Policy Plan Amendment Number 1-12, Lord Fairfax Community College Middletown Sewer and Water Service Area? A request from the Lord Fairfax Community College to include land owned by the Lord Fairfax Community College Foundation into Sewer and Water Service Area to enable the provision of public water and sewer initiated this proposed amendment. The resulting amendment proposes the establishment of the Middletown, Lord Fairfax Suaza that encompasses Lord Fairfax Community College and the adjacent Middletown Elementary School and an institutional land use designation for the area. Water and sewer would continue to be provided by the town of Middletown and the city of Winchester respectively. The parcels included in the Middletown, Lord Fairfax Suaza are 91-A-100, 91-A-99B, 91-A-99, 91-A-99A, and 91-A-78A. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this Comprehensive Policy Plan Amendment? If so, would you please come forward, give your name, magisterial district, and limit your comments to three minutes, please? Seeing no one close to public hearing, who is this?
Matt Creek.
Matt Creek?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank Chris Boyce and his active participation in this process. Lord Fairfax has been a great community partner with Frederick County, and so I would move to approve the Comprehensive Policy Plan Amendment Number 01-12, Lord Fairfax Community College Middletown Sewer and Water Service Area.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Supervisor Ewing. Discussion. Hearing, none. Supervisor Spicer?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
The chairman votes aye, and the motion passes, and the Comprehensive Policy Plan 1-12 is approved. Next, is a public hearing on an ordinance to amend the Frederick County Code, Chapter 165, zoning waiver revisions to Article 6 Business and Industrial zoning districts. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At your September 26th meeting, the Board of Supervisors disposed of most of the waiver amendments that were adjusted throughout the zoning and subdivision ordinances. And that was, of course, to gain conformance with the state code and address the appropriate entity for approving those waiver opportunities. One item, which is this one in front of us this evening, 165-608.05, needed to be readdressed due to advertising. due to advertising, and that's why we're here this evening. It's a very straightforward section, if you will. It does deal with the EM Extractive Manufacturing Zoning District, and of course, we are familiar that that particular issue dealt with the waiver opportunity for excavations within 200 feet of properties owned RAR, PR4, or MH1, and any dwelling or platted residential subdivision. So this section of the zoning ordinance, again, modifies three waiver opportunities from the Planning Commission to the Board of Supervisors, and as the discussion followed during our previous meetings, it eliminates that waiver opportunity for those excavations in the cases that I identified. Planning Commission recommended approval of this particular request on the 7th after revisiting it, and again, we're seeking a decision after a public hearing this evening from the Board of Supervisors.
I have a question. I can understand the changes from Planning Commission to Board of Supervisors and waiver approval.
Yes.
But in the second B2, the waiver option is removed. Why?
If you will recall from our discussion during the public hearing and prior to that, the Comprehensive Plans Committee had recommended that that particular section be struck.
You'll have to forgive me. I have memory blank on it. It was like, I don't remember that one, so I'm not asking to repeat. I really do not remember.
No, the comp plan committee recommended that that be struck, as did the Planning Commission during their discussion. When it came in front of the Board of Supervisors, I believe there was general concurrence that it was a good thing to address and to follow the recommendation of the Planning Commission, and that's why we brought it here this evening with that particular section eliminated, or as you see in the text of the agenda, struck through. Now, if the Board feels that it's appropriate to maintain that, then obviously, we just deal with the three waiver changes from Planning Commission to Board of Supervisors, and we leave it in, but we felt it was appropriate, given the recommendations in the previous discussion, to propose the strike through and elimination.
Is this not exactly what we did down in Kerbrooke with Carmoose, is we waived this requirement?
Yes.
So our logic for doing it down there and then coming along and removing the option to do it baffles me. If there was discussion, I just don't remember it.
Mr. Chairman, wasn't that, didn't the Planning Commission make that waiver and not the Board?
We had, well, I don't know how it happened.
Yes, and of course, that was, of course, a Planning Commission waiver opportunity. They provided that, and the Board didn't have the opportunity to do so, and of course, that also highlighted the need to do what we did with the waiver opportunities. A point related to that, of course, that rezoning has been approved, the proffers have been, of course, approved, and that does not change, this proposed amendment would not change anything associated with that rezoning and the approval of that rezoning.
Questions?
I think, that's my recollection, was that we had an issue some time ago where the Planning Commission approved a waiver, came to us, and all of us said, why aren't we the ones being able to approve that? And I think that's what started this rolling down the hill, if that's my recollection, that we wanted to have final say on several of these issues, particularly with setbacks and things of that nature. That's my recollection.
So the people who recommend, the people who approved this some months back actually recommended to us it be removed?
That's correct.
Interesting.
I voted against the request. But I, Mr. Chairman, I think you get closer than 200 feet to a dwelling. I think you're too close anyway for excavation. I think, I know I wouldn't vote for a waiver allowing less than 200 feet, but that's me.
Other questions? We're in question mode here.
Not a question, Mr. Chairman, but just a comment. When the waiver opportunity is there, you have an opportunity to consider the individual circumstances. If you take it away, then the opportunity to ask the question goes away as well. I'm not sure which way is the preferred way. This one's a little bit tough. We've had that opportunity in our ordinance ever since I've been involved. I can't recall it being used but once, and we didn't make the call on that one.
Other questions? Okay, thank you, sir. This is a public hearing to consider an ordinance to amend the Frederick County Code, Chapter 165, zoning waiver revision to Article 6 Business and Industrial zoning districts, Part 608, EM Extractive Manufacturing District, Section 165, 608.05, setback in yard requirements. The amendment eliminates the waiver opportunity in this section. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for this ordinance to amend the Frederick County Code, Chapter 165? If so, would you please come forward, give your name, magisterial district, and limit your comments, three minutes, please? Anyone? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the Board? This is not magisterial district-specific.
I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Supervisor Fisher. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
We have a second by Supervisor Collins. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman. So as we're going to vote now, this keeps item B2 intact inasmuch as there is no waiver opportunity for that particular section.
That would be the motion right now. If you wanted to amend that motion, you could try.
Would amending that motion require another public hearing?
Mr. Williams, would that be going up or down?
Mr. Chairman, if the Board seeks to adopt less than what's before it, I think the Board could do so. If the Board wants to make a modification, other than just not going forward with the elimination, then it might need a public hearing. But if the idea is to simply change the three waivers from Planning Commission to Board of Supervisors, but not do B2 as part of the change, then I think you're okay.
Well, the no change to the B2 would leave a waiver with Planning Commission approval, and doesn't get where it needs to be either. It's a waiver with board or no waiver, I believe. So is the waiver with the board change your opinion?
I don't think so. I don't think that's a material change as far as whether it changes the intensity of the use.
Mr. Lofton, if you wanted to make the effort, you could try to amend.
May I amend that motion?
It's a motion to amend, yes.
To include item B, paragraph 2, to incorporate the Board of Supervisors as a waiver.
I guess it'd be as written, except substitute board for Planning Commission there.
Yes.
All right, we have a motion to amend. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
We have a second. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, my recollection of the history of this is that staff and certainly the Planning Commission were of the mind that this is such a disruptive activity that under no circumstances could anyone envision it appropriate to waive that setback requirement. And I'm all for retaining the option and ability to be flexible, but I would defer to those opinions if I have cited them correctly and be of the mind that the Board should not be empowered to waive that requirement, and it simply should not be something that can be waived.
You have a discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Fisher.
I think to have a waiver at this particular item is inappropriate. I think, you know, dealing with excavation and the size of what the potential is there, and it's just like having in the RA with active orchard applications. You got 200 feet there. It's a safety issue. Why would you cut a safety issue down? I don't think the waiver is appropriate for B2.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Lofton.
I certainly don't see a scenario where I would approve a waiver of less than 200 feet, but Supervisor DeHaven has pointed out, we can't see every instance that might come before us, and again, I don't know what it would be that would entice me to approve anything less than 200 feet, but at that point, at least, we have the option of looking at that particular plan to see if it somehow merited something other than that. That's the only reason I would do that.
You have a discussion? All right, this is the motion to amend. Supervisor Spicer.
No.
Supervisor Collins.
No.
Supervisor Fisher.
No.
Supervisor Ewing.
No.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, but the noes win, so the motion to amend is defeated. We're back to the original motion. Are we ready to vote? Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Spicer.
Aye.
Chairman votes no, but the motion passes. All right, next, fiscal year 2014 Revenue Sharing Funds for State Funds to Match Local Funds for Portions of Airport Road and Warrior Drive within the Russell 150 development and for reconstruction realignment of Valley Mill Road in its intersection with Route 7. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, of course, as Mr. DeHaven mentioned earlier, from the Transportation Committee. The Transportation Committee recommended moving forward with two revenue-sharing application requests, public hearings. As Mr. Bishop relayed, the consultation with VDOT determined that the Valley Mill was not timely at this moment, and therefore, we're here with the revenue-sharing application for the Russell 150 property. As noted, it is the airport road extended from its current location, and that's west through the Russell 150 project, to the future intersection with Warrior Drive, the intersection of Warrior and Airport Road, and then Warrior Drive north to its intersection of Tevis Street Extended. The request is for $2.8 million to match, and then for a total project of $5.6 million. On the screen to your left, I just, of course, included the Russell 150 generalized development plan, which I think gives you a good reminder of the project itself and where we're talking about, and that is, of course, from its current terminus in this location, extending in a westerly direction of Airport Road extended to Warrior Drive, and then north to Tevis Street. And if you recall, the county was successful in obtaining revenue-sharing funds in previous cycles for the Tevis Street Extended project in that area. So with this request, it has the potential of completing, going a long way towards working with other property owners in this area to complete the road system. Be happy to answer any questions that the Board of Supervisors may have at this time.
Questions? Supervisor Lofton.
Is there any plans or movement on the west side of 81 to continue that if this project goes forward? Would we put all this in place and have a dead end on the other side of 81?
The same property owners are involved with the different discussions. Of course, they're on the county side of things, but I would honestly have to defer to, of course, Mr. Bishop, who's not here this evening, but I haven't been involved with those discussions on the city side. Mr. Lawrence or Mr. Riley may be able to help out.
I believe it is my recollection that the MPO meeting that we discussed this extensively as a joint project, and there was a support from both the city and the county as a priority project to make this project connect, if I'm not mistaken.
Does that mean there are funds to continue this through that vacant land in the city?
There's a magic man down in Richmond who makes things happen when he wants to. We'll see if he wants to.
I am not sure about the specifics of the agreements between the city and the developer as to where they are with that particular segment.
Well, I certainly am in favor of us moving forward with our portion of it here. I just would hate to see it get put in place, and then it's unusable.
There has been no discussion to the contrary that I'm aware of.
There are an awful lot of folks that have the interest in this project for a long time, other than its development, actually, both us and our transportation system and VDOT for an alternative exit route to get to 50 out of the city of Winchester, to a lot of reasons. I think at the end of the day, you're going to see everybody ponying up as much as they can to make it happen. Kind of sometimes the problem is getting the first guy to move.
Mr. Chairman.
Does that answer your question sort of?
Oh, yes, sir. Like I said, I certainly want to move ahead with our portion of it, but I would just like to say there's some reciprocation on the other side. I'd hate to see building a bridge to nowhere.
Just a question. The work being done here will not have to be altered to tie into the Route 522 study and everything that's going on? Will this be reworked?
Good question, but no, it's not anticipated that this would be reworked in this particular location. I think it certainly feeds into the whole effort of studying that area, but it's always been looked at as an enhancement and something that would help with the transportation in that area.
I was just concerned, something might need to be reworked.
Other questions? All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
We now conduct a public hearing on fiscal year 2014 Revenue Sharing Funds for State Funds to Match Local Funds for Portions of Airport Road and Warrior Drive within the Russell 150 development and for reconstruction realignment of Valley Mill Road in its intersection with Route 7. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this fiscal year 2014 Revenue Sharing Fund request? If so, would you please come forward, give your name, magisterial district, and limit your comments, three minutes, please? Seeing no one, close the public hearing. Supervisor DeHaven.
Yes.
Do you have the pleasure?
I would. Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we've moved forward with the revenue-sharing application.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Hearing on Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Spicer. Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. Next, another planning item, rezoning application 06-12, will run revised proffers related to transportation enhancements. This vote was postponed from September 26th till tonight. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This rezoning application, again, dealt with two modifications to the proffer statement, and we discussed those previously, but to just very briefly recognize that the first one is to the transportation enhancements, and that's D5, and that addresses the extension of the timeframe for the construction of the Jubal Early interchange with Route 37, providing an additional five years, and I think it's 2017 with the construction completed in 2022, or prior to the 600th building permit. The second change was to do with the aquatic center. And to touch on that briefly, initially, the applicant had proposed a time extension for the county's ability to obtain that land for an aquatic center for just a couple of years, and that wasn't consistent with the transportation, the timing of the transportation proffer. So what you have in front of you this evening is a revised proffer statement dated October the 4th of this year, and the applicant has made a further modification to that proffer B2 dealing with the aquatic center. And just to highlight what that is, the applicant modified to allow the county five years to determine whether to take advantage of the proffered land for an aquatic center. 2017 that would take it to, again, that's consistent with the proffer statement we just previously mentioned. It's important, though, that I do point out that the applicant made some other changes to that aquatic center proffer. Now, the stipulate, there is a stipulation, excuse me, stipulation attached to that proffer that requires the county to approve a site plan for an aquatic center within the same time period. There's also a reversion clause that has been added that stipulates that the land is conveyed back should a construction contract not be awarded within the two years, of course, you know, of the county's acquisition of that property. There are the changes, the maximum of five acres. Previously, it was a five-acre site. Again, that's relatively straightforward and very similar, and a change location from the northwest quadrant to the southwest quadrant. So I felt it was important, as we recognized that proffer B2 changes, to point out those modifications. This is a close-up of the exhibit, and of course, I This is a close-up of the exhibit, and of course, I think as far as location, this was the initial northwest quadrant, and the applicant has stated in the proffer statement within the southwest quadrant of the commercial center, so presumably that's in that location there. Again, relatively straightforward, similar with our discussion previously, but I did want to point out the changes that have been made since the last board meeting. Mr. Evan Wyatt is here, representing the applicant this evening, and he'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Questions of staff?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Ewing.
Clarify for me now, the aquatic center. We have two years to issue a contract on that with the proposed changes? To award a contract?
The way it's stated is, please forgive me as I roll down to this, the applicant should provide the deed to the county, provided that the county has approved a site plan for the new aquatic center within the time period stipulated above. The land associated with this aquatic center shall be promptly conveyed back to the applicant by the county if the county has not awarded a construction contract for a new aquatic center on the site within two years following the recording of a deed to this land area.
If the property reverts back to the developer, are they required to put some other recreational facilities in?
There's an additional statement within that section that reverts it back, if you will, to the amenities already specified in Section F of the proffer statement, which deals with the recreational amenities, and that's a trigger for them to provide the pool. Correct?
The movement of the maximum of five acres for the aquatic center to the southwest quadrant puts that in a commercial area and not in a residential area?
It is in a commercial area, as it is presently. Excuse me, that's my hope. Yeah, the orange is now since identified as a commercial land base, so it does maintain it within a commercial area.
So if the county doesn't make use of that option, it would be used as a commercial area?
That's correct.
Other questions, staff? Thank you. Mr. Wyatt, did you want to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When we spoke last time, the question and issue was the timing to be consistent with the development of the new interchange, and then the question about was the original proffer awarded to provide an opportunity for the developer if something didn't be performed by the county? So that's what this amendment does. Just two quick things that Mike didn't cover. The first one, the amendment that's before you for Section B2, we met with the folks at Parks and Rec, and there should be a updated comment in your agenda package where they support the revision. The second thing, just more for clarification than anything, the discussion for the aquatic center site has always been in this corner. The original proffer didn't specify that, so we made sure that was clear in this revision. But this area right here is where Mayor Man's Lane currently goes out of the city through the county and then across the existing bridge. We never really discussed that land bay with Parks and Rec because obviously, there's a road running through it, and the way the original proffer was written, once this road system is in place and these are in place, at that point in time, we would then have to come back with a new rezoning to zone this kind of hatched part right here that's currently in public right of way. So I just want to make sure it's clear that we weren't talking about a land bay and now we're talking about another one. We're in the same land bay we've always talked about. But more importantly, the revisions have been vetted by Parks and Rec, and they're comfortable with them, and if you all are comfortable, we request approval.
Questions of the applicant? So am I to conclude that the reason you moved it was because you had a road through it that you'd have to rezone later?
No, it was never discussed in that quadrant. It's always been in the southwest. We just defined it for clarification now.
Oh, okay. So the reference to a change from northwest to southwest isn't quite accurate?
Correct.
All right. Thanks, sir. Anybody else have a question? All right. If there's no more questions for the staff and the applicant, this is Gainesborough.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Certainly, it's my recollection that the concerns that justified the postponement have been addressed by the applicant, so I'm enthusiastic to recommend that we approve the revision of the proffers relating to the enhancements described in the package of materials.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, by Supervisor Lofton. This was originally a public hearing?
Yes.
No?
Actually, I didn't recall.
We'll go down the line anyway. Supervisor Spicer.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the rezoning application 06-12 will run revised proffers is approved. Board liaison reports, are there any? It's my understanding from memos, emails, maybe not responded to, but maybe I did, that the Joint Finance Committee meeting is in works for December. So your representatives there are Mr. Ewing and I, but certainly, if there was an issue that you hoped was on that agenda, you could let us know. My understanding is to talk about joint funded projects, Mr. Riley? Is that right?
I think the MOU requires a meeting in December. That's the only reason that it's on there.
Any other board liaison reports? All right, next, we'll move on to citizen comments. This is the time the board sets aside for citizens to address the board. If there is anyone here who would like to address the board on any topic, if you please come forward, give your name, magisterial district, and let me your comments to three minutes, please. Is there anyone?
Original public hearing.
Seeing no one, we'll close the citizen comment portion meeting and move on to board supervisors' comments. If there are none?
Mr. Chairman, move for adjournment.
We have a motion by Supervisor Ewing to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Fisher. All's in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those, no? Meeting adjourned.
[inaudible]
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 [inaudible]